I will now call to order the January 30th, 2025, Clackamas County Board of Commissioner Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please do the roll call for us?
Yes, thank you Chair Roberts. First, our staff support today, County Council Jane Vedo. Clerk to the Board Andrew is out of the office today, so filling in is Tony Maranick. Thank you, Tony. Commissioner West is on his way with that roll call. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Fireside?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Present.
Chair Roberts?
Here. Right, I will now, please, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, good morning, everyone. Last week I announced we'd be holding public communication at the beginning of each meeting. The exception to this is that when we have items from the Housing Authority, since we welcome a public member for that Board, we'd like to hold that item first out of respect for her time. So, public communication will be our very second agenda item for today. So, I will recess as the Board of County Commissioner and convene as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Gary, what is up next?
Thank you Chair, and as you mentioned, joining you online is Resident Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Commissioner Leenstra, are you there?
I'm here, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Leenstra. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda, one item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County for payments for the delivery of housing and homeless programs and services. Agreement value is $30,775,472.96 for five years, funding through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds, Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the list.
All right. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items from the Housing Authority Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I move we approve—
I move—
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Leenstra.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Commissioner Leenstra, seconded by Commissioner Fireside to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireside?
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Chair Roberts?
Aye, and the motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And Gary, what's next?
Thank you Chair, and thank you Commissioner Leenstra for being here. Next is public communication. Back to you Chair.
All right, well, now I'm going to open the meeting up for public testimony. In-person testimony will be taken first, and again, I ask my colleagues to just please hold your comments until after the—close the public communication portion. Testimony is limited to three minutes. I ask that comments be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. Clerk, would you please moderate both in-person and virtual testimony for us?
Thank you Chair, we'll begin with in-person testimony. My first registration is Natalie Lutmer. On deck will be Mahala Bailey.
Good morning Commissioners, this is my fourth time here. I did want to make it clear that for myself and for the other employees that are here, we do have to do this on our own time, so I have to clock out and then clock back in when I'm done. Today, I'm just running short on leave, so I'm probably going to head out as soon as I'm done. That doesn't mean I don't want to stay because I think it's important, it just means I am running short on time. Again, this is the reason I'm here, same as I was the few times before. It's regarding the Kaiser monthly premium for EA members going from $88.46 to $303.20. That's an increase of $214.75. Again, I'm not trying to bargain any of the issues, I'm just commenting on the Kaiser issue and what has happened with it. I was asked by someone that's not in our union, "Why do I keep coming up to speak? Why am I coming up here every week?" And it's—I told them it's because my paychecks are getting docked. That's what happened in January. This 303 came out of my paychecks this January. I had two days' notice before they took the first installment. You know, that's why I keep coming up. When they stop getting docked, I'll probably stop coming up. But, you know, that being said, I know that you don't know me. You don't know what my intentions are, what my heart is. You've only seen me for nine minutes in the past month. That's as much as you know me, or the nine minutes that you've been able to see. I am a very reasonable person, and for something to get me up here, it has to be something I am very, very passionate about. You know, that being said, I don't know you either. I only know what I've seen, which are, you know, snippets. And Commissioner West, I voted for you. When you were elected, I voted for you. I genuinely don't feel you understand what I've been expressing because your responses have felt very patronizing to me. Whether or not that was your intent, that's what I have felt. I understand that bargaining is back and forth. I understand that there are two sides. You don't know what I believe, you don't know what has been said that I take stock in. And Commissioner West, last time you said you want things to be illuminated. In the end of this, if you can show that the county had no option but to increase the Kaiser premium to $300, that it was not a choice, that it was forced, that the county couldn't step back and say, "Hey, you know, wait a minute, this increase will hurt our employees. This is going to financially hurt them, this is going to make things a struggle, and in good faith, we're going to honor this 88.46 while we continue through this bargaining process so we are not hurting the people that work for that." If that's what comes out, I will come back and apologize for, you know, my misunderstanding on that. But I do assume that there were other options out there, and that this being so hurtful as it is to these employees, it's just something I have to speak out. You know, at the end of the day, what we see as employees, that the benefits team was instructed by the county to take this money out of our checks, that is what's happening. And I just ask that, again, we make this a priority. These aren't things that we're asking for, that's what bargaining things are. Those are things that are being asked for. This is literally coming out of the pay that I expected, and it will continue to come out, and it just needs to stop. Thank you again for hearing me. I hope I don't have to come back next week, but I'll still have a smile on my face if I do.
Thank you. Next up, Mahala Bailey, followed by Jerry Reeves.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mahala Bailey. I'm a Service Coordinator with Clackamas County Social Services. I also would like to encourage us to reconsider the decision to change the rate of Kaiser Permanente to $303. This has been powerfully impactful to our paychecks. People are talking about their struggle that this is causing in their lives, and it has most definitely affected me. It took me many years to establish good rapport with my providers at Kaiser Permanente. I've been a patient with Kaiser for 17 years. And the decision to go away from Kaiser was really a hard one to make, and I could not make that, rightfully so, because of all the rapport and the years of effort I put into working with these providers, which are incredible providers for me. And so I just want to just really encourage us to consider the impact and the power of looking at the health and the wellness and the wages of our employees, and to really consider that as being paramount. Because if we have healthy employees and people getting the services that they want and need, and those needs met by the providers they want to meet with and be cared for by, with a reasonable rate. So, I just think that that is one of the most imminent things we can do, is to outlook for people's health and wellness, but also to not have that hit their pocketbook like this, because it has just been really—it has had an effect on everyone. So I would like us to look at that and reconsider having that rate go back to 88.46. And that's all I have to share today, and it's just like what Natalie said, putting people's health priority, but also not costing us so much money just to meet our health needs. All right, thank you all.
Thank you for coming. Next up is Mr. Reeves. This is my last blue card. If you would like to testify in person, please red—please fill out a blue card and drop it in the basket. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Reeves, longtime businessperson in Clackamas County, a home builder, structural engineer, and so forth. And I'm here just—in kind of maybe a weird way, I'm just trying to clear my conscience on a deal that was done when Terry Emret in Clackamas County settled this case that was about 18 months ago. And I, on behalf of Terry and Stephen Madcor, negotiated a deal, and Terry got some land, and Terry got an apology letter. There was a side deal that Terry would clean up all of his code violations. There were eight code violations at that time, and there was quite a little controversy about whether or not they could trust him to do that and clean it up. And I gave, personally, I gave Steve Madcor my word that I would bird dog that and make it—and clear those violations out—up. And now it's been 18 months, none of them have been done, and when I tried to work on them, Terry said, "Oh, no, we're not going to do that." And so I feel a promise was broken to me from Terry. I feel like I gave my word, and I'm not expecting you—you're all new, you're not the ones that wrote the letter. I don't—I don't—I don't know if you—any—I guess maybe some of you were on the—that commission, but anyway, I don't know whether or not you want to do a—I don't know why—so the real question is, why is the code violation people not giving him the violations, or why isn't somebody calling him in breach of the settlement agreement, or something? But it's not really my dog in the fight, but I just feel like ethically, I feel like I needed to put it out there and just let you guys know that—it does exist, and how —what you do with it is your business. It's not mine, but I'm kind of clearing my heart of this problem that I've wrestled with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming.
I'll now move to Zoom testimony with your approval, Chair.
Yes.
Beginning with Chris Waller. Ms. Waller, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. As always, when I speak before the Board, I am speaking as a private citizen. Federal immigration policies are being used as a cudgel to dehumanize and demonize people and divert attention from real issues. By calling people aliens and invaders, by falsely painting them as ravaging criminals, we create an environment where hate crimes flourish. As the American Immigration Council wrote, "A robust body of research shows that welcoming immigrants into American communities not only does not increase crime, but can actually strengthen public safety. In fact, immigrants, including undocumented immigrants, are less likely to commit crimes than the US-born. This is true at the national, state, county, and neighborhood levels and for both violent and nonviolent crime. The USDA estimates that 800 farms in Clackamas County hire laborers. We have numerous construction businesses and many nursing facilities. All of these sectors rely on immigrant labor, and many of the immigrants performing these services are currently undocumented. Many others are desperately trying to obtain legal status but are being thwarted by cruel policies. This is reality, and it's also a reality that our county would be harmed—not helped—by the forced removal of these people and by the refusal to create paths to citizenship for people who are already here and part of our society. So what should Clackamas County do? I call on our Commission to have available at county facilities the Know Your Rights red cards created by the Immigrant Legal Resource Center. The Clackamas County Children's Commission, for example, currently distributes these at their facilities. Consider supporting Senate Bill 611, the Food for All Oregonians program, which would offer food assistance to children and the elderly, no matter their documentation status. No child or elder should have to go hungry. Consider supporting Senate Bill 703, which would allow the Department of Human Services to provide grants to nonprofits to help citizens—non-citizens obtain legal status, and to continue supporting our existing state laws such as the Sanctuary Promise Act. Governance through compassion guided by facts should be our goal rather than governance by cruelty and misinformation. I will send you in all an email with some of these resources. Thank you."
Thank you, Chris.
Next up, Mr. Weber. Please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes. Apologies, Mr. Weber's lowered his hand. Next, I will move to Christine Kennedy. Christine Kennedy has also lowered her hand. Mr. Weber, I will come back to you. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and area of residence.
Thank you, Tony. And Commissioners, Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge. It is a misconception that liberals disregard everything conservatives say. We share common ground. For instance, at a recent meeting, a citizen expressed a desire to speak his piece without fear of interruption. This is a valid concern that I've experienced in the past, though I have not witnessed such interruption by any of the current commission. I agree with Commissioner West when he said last week that he didn't have all the facts about immigration, and I share his concerns about reducing violence in Clackamas County. Where we might differ is what the ultimate effect of his publicly spoken words is on public safety. It is troubling to use a single instance of violence in the metro area by a person who is here illegally to call into question the entirety of Oregon Sanctuary Promise Act of 21, as is the mischaracterization of that act as a free pass for immigrants to come to Clackamas to commit crimes and acts of violence. Oregon will cooperate with qualified federal judicial subpoenas and will handle any requests from federal agencies through state agencies. I have faith that our sheriff and legal system is just as interested in the public safety as you and I are. It is telling that one of the strongest vocal supporters of Commissioner West's claims was a person who has participated in multiple violent Proud Boy incidences here in the metro area. The same organization that attacked and injured police at the Capitol four years ago and have been given and permission slipped through a blanket pardon to permit more violence if it will further the current federal political agenda. Also troubling is the chilling effect this language has on our migrant community. As of 2019, undocumented migrants make up over a third of the agricultural workforce in Oregon. There are recent reports out of California that workers are not showing up to pick citrus fruit because they are afraid. This will make our groceries in Clackamas County more expensive. Commissioner West, you are a nurse, so you might be aware of what role the migrant community plays in caring for our elderly. What effect on the health and well-being of our citizens will be felt if our caregivers stop coming to work for fear of their safety? In addition to these effects, one cannot fathom the mental stress and injury this environment creates for the innocent children of migrants, both in school and away. It is understandable to be concerned about an isolated act of horrific violence, but your constituency would be best served if you toned down the rhetoric and worked with your fellow commissioners to draft policy that specifically addressed the issues rather than inflaming your base and risking increased public violence by those who see such rhetoric as a call to action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Christine Kennedy. Please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes. This is my last registration. If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Christine Kennedy, please go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Christine Kennedy. Today, I am speaking in a personal capacity. I consider myself a community health activist. The first time I spoke to the Commission, it was in regards to the COVID pandemic. As a retired nurse who's worked in a university health setting, I had the privilege of working with a 34-bed MICU, and I remember the last—I wasn't there for COVID. I retired prior to COVID. Anyway, as leaders, I admire all of you for working so hard to become a leader and have the opportunity to take care of the community health of our county. So here we are in 2025. We need leaders. We desperately need leaders who listen to people, who are willing to challenge lies, who are willing to try to stand up. I use the term "personal agency." What that means is, we live in the United States of America. We have the right to speak up, we have the right to stand up, we have the right to share our individual truths and not fear for being attacked. As an old lady, I don't worry about it too much. I worry about my grandchildren. And I implore the Board and all of our employees and our people in Clackamas County to please work together. We're in really serious times. Thank you very much for everything you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Christine. Mr. Chair, I see no one further for public communication.
All right, well, again, once again, I want to thank everybody for coming today to testify, so I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and turn to my colleagues for comments. I see Commissioner West would like to comment.
It is not easy to sit up here and address—and not be able to address—concerns that relate to labor negotiations. A lot of assumptions and accusations can be made, but it's really—it's only one facet or segment of the entire story when you can't bring more information forward or share what is true or real at this time because of where we're at with the negotiations. I hope—I said this last week—that this does become more illuminated. I can speak for myself as a Commissioner. There was no desire or plan to see some of these outcomes. I wish that they could have been avoided. And I have to be super couched and careful in what I say, but take what I've said with a grain of salt, I mean, or just like listen to it and maybe keep an open mind as things roll out. I think more will become clear in the future, and I'm listening, I think we all are, and I know that this is a burden for some in our community that are work for the county. But I want to just, once again, reiterate, can't really speak more to it, but as we've heard before, there's probably more to the story than what is being said currently based, and that's all we can really do at this point. So I just want to make that clear again, and come every single week, and until we can have more public information out there, it's going to kind of be the same answer, but we're following it closely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schrader, comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Look to my other colleagues, all right. Not seeing any comments at this time, just to, again, I want to reiterate the fact that we are listening, and a number of issues from employees to citizens coming forward to talk about concerns on some code violations and a number of other issues to immigration. I want you to know we are listening, and also want you to know that we'll have staff follow up on many of things. I can't say we're going to follow up on everything, but we are listening, and want you to know that. So with that being said, Gary, I'll go ahead and close this portion. What's up next for us?
Thank you Chair, next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a board order delegating signing authority to the Chair or the County Administrator to sign agreements on behalf of the county and its service districts for law enforcement-sensitive agreements. Delegation authority is for five years, no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Health Housing and Human Services, item one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for payments for the delivery of housing and homeless service programs and services. Agreement value is $30,775,472.96 for five years, funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds, Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Finance, item one, approval of an agreement with Secure Pacific for medical intrusion and fire monitoring systems for county properties. Amendment value is $19,908.18 for 18 months. Total contract value is $154,402.86 for three years, funding through departmental cost allocations, which does include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Mr. Chair, that concludes the list.
All right. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Chair, move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Commissioner West and seconded by Commissioner Schrader to approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Fireside?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Roberts?
Aye. Motion's approved, 5-0. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioner, convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary, what is up next?
Next Chair is the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Development Agency Consent Agenda, one item, approval of a public improvement contract with Corpac Construction Company for the Southeast Monroe Street Improvements Project. Total contract value $7,418,501 for four years, funding through Clackamas River Water Environment Services, and $6,183,057 of development agency funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the list.
Right, thank you. Does any Director wish to remove any items from the Development Agency Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Move to approve the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, so it's been approved and moved by Director Savis, seconded by Director Schrader to approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Director West?
Aye.
Director Fireside?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Chair Roberts?
Aye. Motion's approved, 5-0. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And Gary, what is up next for us?
Thank you Chair, next is County Administrator update. During my time, I liked to share great work of our county employees, and today, I'd like to recognize our team within Health Housing and Human Services—excuse me, our Public Health Division employs community paramedics. These community paramedics provide outreach, education, and service connection to communities in the county with a focus on houseless population. County Community Paramedic Jamie Brunig was recently praised by the Father's Heart Street Ministry staff, and they wrote in about Jamie. "Most of our clients have trust issues and do not like to ask for help, but some come with big needs. Jamie has helped our most vulnerable clients get the help they need. She responds quickly and can help brainstorm for the best ways to help our clients. Her knowledge is outstanding and her guidance is amazing. It is so refreshing to get answers and support in real time. I just wanted to give my feedback and let you know, many crises have been averted due to Jamie's assistance. Your program is such a needed breath of fresh air." It absolutely is. Thank you, Jamie, and all of our community paramedic team within our Public Health Division here at Clackamas County. Next, we'd like to recognize our Law Library at Clackamas County. Did you know we have a law library? Yes, Commissioners, you know that. It's by state law, counties are required to operate a law library. Our Law Library of Clackamas County is currently in downtown Oregon City. It will be moved to the new courthouse here on our campus when the courthouse is completed. And the Law Library provides access to anyone, anyone who wants to go there, anyone, not just attorneys and legal folks. One of our Law Library assistants, Elaine Bogaly, recently received a certificate of appreciation from the Clackamas County Circuit Court for her outstanding assistance provided to a self-represented litigant. This person—the litigant—had a number of challenges using electronics, and Elaine spent several hours helping this person navigate the internet and use the public printers in the Law Library to achieve compliance in a discovery action which helped that litigant. So thank you to Elaine and our Law Library staff for all they do to help our community. That is my good news for today. Thank you Commissioners, back to you Chair.
All right, thanks for bringing it up. All right. Thanks for bringing that to us, Gary. And now's the time for Commissioner Communication. And if I could be so kind to turn to my colleague to the right, Martha, and would you like to go first?
Yeah, I want to mention a few things today. First of all, I'm going to probably say some things. I want to be very clear. You know, no one disagrees when people are violent or they've created, committed a crime. And if they are undocumented, that, there are consequences for that. That's not the issue. The issue in many ways is the words that we use. Illegal aliens suggests that these people are not people. They're aliens. They're different. Are they coming down from some spaceship? I mean, so for me, the appropriate word is undocumented workers. So I'm just going to put that out there. I never use that word. I think it's erroneous. I think it has implications because there are people in this country who are undocumented. But we have to be extremely careful that we don't somehow paint a broad brush that these people are somehow doing criminal activities. I have a daughter who is a prosecutor in Boston. She does the rapes. She does the child abuse cases. She does domestic violence. She sees a lot of this. And I've spoken to her. And what she has said to me is, really, most of the folks she's prosecuting at this point are documented citizens. So I think we have to consider that. Everyone, there are people out there who are bad people, no matter where they come from. And they're going to have to be prosecuted for crimes. But in my mind, I don't see being an undocumented worker a crime. I think it's something we need to do as Americans to help people feel welcome in our country. So I'm going to tell you a story because I speak from experience. Many of you know I ran a farm for close to 20 years. We grew strawberries and row crop vegetables. And we had folks who would come and pick our crops. They were decent. They were kind. And they worked extremely hard in the fields. One of the issues I faced at that time was that a lot of these women, they were women who were picking strawberries. And they were, they were pretty much bringing their kids down into the field. And a hot field out there in the middle with no, you know, they didn't necessarily have water with them or anything like that. And I just thought, I can't let that happen. These are children. And I had little kids at the time. So I kind of turned my dining room table into this kind of an ad hoc daycare. So when, when these ladies came to work, when these really strong women who were trying to support their families by picking berries that I would have to deliver later in the day, I really would take care of their children at my house. And I'm not saying this because I'm such a great person. That's not it. I'm just trying to give you an example. They played with my kids. I gave them snacks. They had water. I had a swing set outside. And it was great for my kids and it was great for those kids. So fast forward many, many years in the future. And, you know, I'm still on the farm. We're still, you know, growing crops and things. I have this young guy comes to the door and he knocks on my door. And I didn't know who he was. He seemed like a nice young man. So I go, well, hi, what are you doing here? Can I, can I help you? He goes, yeah. He said, I just wanted to say hello. I said, I remember when my mom worked here and was picking fruit. I remember being at your table. And I remember playing with Play-Doh. This is a true story. And I'm standing there with my mouth like, what? He goes, I wanted to tell you. He said, I went to college and I'm a teacher now. So what I'm trying to tell people, you can have a negative story, okay, or you can have a positive story. And I also helped a lot of these folks with the Benedictine Sisters of Mount Angel. They didn't have housing. So I worked with them. And a lot of times we had to bring people to Mount Angel. And they have a shelter there now called St. Joseph's Shelter that they founded specifically because there were people who were being unhoused. So for me, you know, I think this is a matter of grace, a matter of acceptance, a matter of really the words that we use. And that I would encourage people to find the common ground that people who commit crimes should be prosecuted. And if they are not documented in this country, of course, they should be removed. But do not think that everyone who is undocumented is somehow a criminal. That's the danger with the language that we use right now, in my opinion. Folks can agree with me. Folks can disagree with me. This is not, not left, not right. This isn't because I'm, you know, not in the middle of things. I'm just saying this is the moderate, from my perspective, road that we need to be taking with understanding of folks. So that's my comment there. But I have another comment here. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to the Celebration of Life with, down in Salem, and with Peter, Peter Courtney passed away in July. And I've known him for years. He was a mentor for me politically in many ways. He was pretty flamboyant. He was funny. He gave me a hard time when I was in the Senate. I always got hauled into his office because I was one of the more conservative members. I was always, he was always going, you know, okay, Martha. I didn't, I didn't go along with the, with the flow. Let me put it that way. What?
Sippy cups.
Sippy cup. Oh, yeah. The sippy cup bill was my demise, actually. If you want to know that. I just thought that was a silly bill. And they didn't have the, you brought up sippy cups. I can't believe you did that. Anyway, yeah, that was, that was one of my, that was one of my, you know, missteps with Courtney. But he was gracious to me. He gave me wonderful committee assignments. I served on the Transportation, Economic and Transportation Committee. And I also served on the Veterans Committee, where I chaired that committee because I had worked with Governor Kulin Gauzki and the National Guard as a commissioner to pull together all kinds of things that we needed to pass for the safety and for the, you know, the way we treat our veterans, you know. And when you see that plate, of the veteran's plate that you see now with people, I just, I always like to tell people that was my bill. And we pushed that through so people could be proud of being a veteran and also to give law enforcement, actually, Craig, to know if someone was pulled over that they were dealing with a veteran. So this man was a great man. It was wonderful to see his family. And I'm going to have a quote here from Peter Courtney. And this was the Western Oregon University commencement address in 2015. And it says, "Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to make a decision. Don't be afraid to lose. Don't be afraid if your plan gets loose on you. Don't be afraid of the hand that stilt you. Don't be afraid to love even if it hurts. Don't be afraid to say, I have done all I can do. Don't be afraid to be you." So this was a great man. And I'm going to keep this and hang this on my wall because I think that is one of the most brilliant things that I've read in a very long time. God bless you, Peter Courtney. God bless your family. And to all my colleagues who I hadn't seen in quite a while down there. It was fantastic to see all of you. So thank you. That's all I have to say today.
Very nice. Thanks, Martha. Commissioner Savas?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak here today. Appreciate all of our public comment. And this week, reflecting, responding to a lot of folks and even questions that come up and working with our newest colleagues. You know, always remembering and learning and reflecting back as to our job is being, trying to be representative of the electorate. And be mindful, that's quite different than being responsible to the citizens. Sometimes the citizens are not necessarily the electorate that actually got us where we are or who voted for us. So really, our biggest job really is what's in the best interest of the citizens at large at the county. And also, also be mindful that some people don't have necessarily the ability or the opportunity to approach us and share with us their concerns. Or that that's because of their working, or they're perhaps intimidated, or maybe they don't have the skill set to communicate, whatever that may be. So I think often we hear sometimes, for example, that we'll hear, I'll just digress. We're all raised to believe there's always two sides to every story. I think as we get older in life, especially in the political world, there's, you know, three, four, five, seven, more sides to every story. So it's more complex. So, you know, it is often that there's no, no decision sometimes we can make that's going to make everyone happy, right? And I think there was a saying that one of our former commissioners way back told me. It says, when everyone's mad, I think that's the best indication you've done your job right. And that's kind of a hard thing to process. But, you know, sometimes you realize, again, when there's maybe five, six sides to a particular issue and viewpoints, that we got to find that with the best middle ground for everyone. And that is based, usually based, you've heard me say this before, is based on the information. And we can't really make good decisions without good information. And sometimes when parties have the wherewithal and the methods or the influence to approach us and maybe whether they're elected or not elected and so forth. But, you know, I'm always compelled to say, well, what am I not hearing, right? So, and sometimes I've had resort on some issues over the years to knocking on doors, you know. And I will actually just take a, you know, a week or two. And I will just say, well, gosh, I really want to understand where this is all at. And I'm not hearing from those folks. So I've, you know, I've gone on door knocking campaigns. And over the years, I know without a doubt, I've probably knocked on tens of thousands of doors over the years of being involved. I start knocking on doors, actually, in the 90s. Had no aspirations ever being elected, didn't want to be elected. But, you know, I just start, I just thought it was a point in time in my life to give back to the community and start getting involved. And so that started in 1997. And so I have found that when you knock on someone's door and you ask them about a particular issue and what their thoughts are, or you ask them what's on your mind, as opposed to trying to sell them something. And if you can get them to open up and talk about it, that you actually get a perspective that otherwise we never would have heard. And I will say that that has been probably one of the most powerful influences upon me. Not necessarily about what they said, but recognizing that you hear things that you didn't know before. And that the advocacy groups were so effective that it really blocked out everything else. And it overwhelmed. And the decision makers often only hear those powerful voices, influences, and not the voices of those that are less represented, if you will. So, you know, Commissioner Schrader and I have talked about, you know, a long time ago and over the years about representative government. We look how our legislature is structured. And our legislature is structured that, you know, a state representative is elected from a district, right? And so every area in the state has a local representative. And they also have a local senator, state senator. That's representation. If they live in the city, maybe they have a mayor or so forth. Maybe they're dividing the districts or not, or county commissioners. And maybe they're divided in districts or not. But they, you know, they will, the flaw with that, to some degree, I won't say a flaw, but a consequence of representative government is that if you are a state representative from one area, maybe you don't care so much about what other constituents feel that are in other districts, right? It's about your, so you become very provincial. And, and you hope that those levels of influence and voices are, you know, that, I think that's kind of led to some of the urban rural divide, if you will, as one example. My, my point here today is that we have to strive to listen to everyone. And I think the, where I'm comfortable in a nonpartisan, nonpolitical sense is that I can rest easy and sleep easy at night knowing I'm trying to be really balanced. I'm trying to listen to everything. And this is a nonpartisan, nonpolitical thing, even though things are political by nature or partisan by nature. I totally understand that. But we have to look at it all. And I just want to let people know that even though we may not make a decision that maybe is in favor, you know, I think that we all try to try or learn how to, learn how to listen and, and try to listen. So, but just because we didn't make a decision that you expressed doesn't mean we didn't listen. I think there's this assumption that we didn't vote a certain way, so therefore we didn't listen to them. Or we didn't factor their position in their, in our calculus. So I always say that we make the best decisions with the best and most complete information possible. And we strive all the time to do that. So aside from what we've heard this year thus far and under public comment on our Thursday mornings, I just want to just tell you what I, just a few things of what I heard just in the last seven days. And I'm just going to list a variety of things. I heard issues about parks. I heard business issue, business concerns about businesses being impacted by, you know, crime and so forth. I heard transportation issues. I heard issues about aerial surveillance. I've heard issues or the invasion of privacy. I've heard issues about, concerns about climate. I've been approached by water issues, law enforcement issues, library issues, people with learning disabilities and their plight, and also people with mobility issues, disabilities and their plight. That's just what I've heard in just the last seven days. That's just the range. I just can only speak to that because of the range of issues. I happened to be last Thursday night at the last open house of the Sunrise Gateway Project. I was, I was so pleasantly surprised. There were over 300 people there in and out. But collectively, but a lot of new faces that have not been involved. So it was really, 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 really nice. I had my little badge on with my name on it. And, you know, Paul Savas, Clackamas County Commissioner. So people shared their transportation issues. But it also came, especially when they were leaving, by the way, Commissioner, I got this issue, by the way. And totally unrelated to that, I think that is the, those are the opportunities, I think, to engage with the community and hearing was on their minds. And I, what rings to me the most are the voices that don't, and the concerns that don't really make it, or the geographic areas that don't have that level of, I don't have the power. And I thought one of them that was relevant to the Sunrise Gateway, just to give you a, for instance, it was not necessarily related to parks, but it had a parks element to it. And it happened to be someone who lives in North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, a lady with, with a disability, mobility disability. And she was expressing the fact that she did not have access to any parks or very little access to any parks in her area. And it's about geographically where she lived, in an area that's been very compromised and has not had much in the way of any investment. But it also related to transportation because part of the access was, there are a couple of parks that perhaps that she could get to, but they're so unsafe. And I think that's part of the issue with the Sunrise Gateway Project is the safety issues, access, access that. So I just want to tell you that, sharing with my colleagues that Thursday night, it was a robust attendance and a lot of, lot of support. I didn't hear anyone actually complaining. Everyone was wanting to see something happen, whether it was for safety or whether it was for parks and recreation or mobility issues. But I think the whole process thus far and the open houses and public processes has been positive and supportive. People really want, they want to start building it now. They want to see that project happen now. And everyone's saying that for different reasons. And part, and part of the things that they want to see happen now or safety issues are not even in the study area. There are other issues that we know are, you know, farther east. But all to say, I just want to give you, number one, a report and just, just the, how powerful it is that impacts upon me about trying to make sure we, we hear the voices that we don't often hear. Chair, I yield back.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner West?
It's been a very busy week at the legislature. Did some testifying. There's a bill I think we might want to keep our eye on. And I think it may help benefit community paramedic work, which I've been a huge champion of. And I think it really helps do that more preventative work in getting downstream or helping people not overburden the 911 system or have more acute crisis, acute or chronic crisis within their healthcare. We have a community paramedic that has a caseload of individuals that have some different needs. And so maybe they need help with their diabetes management. Maybe there's a mental health crisis. There may be that they're on medication assisted treatment for substance abuse. But they have a relationship with our community mayor paramedic, who's Neil Clausen, by the way, who is in Clackamas County, who is phenomenal dude. Like he's great at this work. Did a ride along with him. I recommend you, Chair and Commissioner Fireside, that you do a ride along with him also. But it is really essential to being creative and multifaceted in our approach to, to help people not just go to emergency rooms, not get lost, not fall through the cracks, but have that type of community care. So community paramedic work has been huge return on investment. And I believe Senate Bill 161 that was, that is supported right now. I think it's Deb Patterson's bill out of the Senate. of the Senate. The Coalition of Local Health Officials supports it, had some really interesting testimony on the bill this week, the Northwest Oregon Network, out of La Grande, and the Association of Oregon Counties is supporting it, to support counties with this effort. I believe it's a very reasonable ask on the budget, too, to help support this infrastructure for public health. I think maybe we should consider adding our name to that, or watching that legislation, too. I, I wasn't actually aware of it until I was sitting in the hearing, and then the bill on cardiology prevention care with calcium scorey was next, that was my, that was the bill that I, I brought forward at my request. And so that also went well, but anything that we can do to get downstream and get ahead of adverse outcomes. So Oregon has said, hey, we want to, we want to really control the cost of healthcare at 3.4%. Well, we aren't, that's not a reality right now, especially with inflationary pressures, and so we have to look at real ways to bend the cost curve. That impacts all levels of government, really, especially counties and statewide levels. So when we can see a way to maybe make a reasonable investment upfront, but we're preventing that much more expense down the road, I really think that we should be aware of those opportunities. We already have a very successful community paramedic, and I think this would give, like, there's also this talk about, they're giving scholarship to help deal with the workforce around where we're having workforce shortages, and this was one of them, and potentially help kind of raise up Oregonians to maybe step into these necessary fields. So it was an interesting bill, I think we should take a look at it. I had a really, I really, I had a great meeting with the mayor of Wes Lynn and his council president last night, talking a lot about transportation issues, they wanted to get up to speed on the, the mayor's kind of stance and what the counties are doing with the SHS situation that we've been working on, Chair Roberts. I, you know, want to make sure that they're up to speed, also because I think Metro's about to give that same presentation that they just gave in Lake Oswego. It was a, it was a rough reception for Metro in Lake Oswego, the, their council and mayor Buck were very prepared for that, and really challenged in a credible way Metro in that meeting. So I think that we should be, I just want to make sure that that relation, we just have a long history, the last two years, that's not that long, but sometimes it feels that way in government. We have a good history right now, working so well with our cities. You know, the big reason why tolling is being paused and paused, and maybe not coming back, but maybe it is, we're a little bit in limbo on that, as the legislature is behind closed doors, I guess, keeping us all on pins and needles before they decide what they're going to foist upon us. But the, the big fight was in Clackamas County, and if we remember right, it was the county that said, hey, let's challenge the EA. Dan and his staff and Jamie, and they went to work and they created this, this very robust document that challenged the EA. The cities galvanized with us through C4. The mayor of Wes Lynn was a star in his ability to help advocate and push back against tolling. So it was this beautiful symbiotic relationship between the cities and the counties. And then, I feel like the Clackamas Caucus was then able to have the tool in their toolbox they needed to really go back to the legislature, because we have 16 different state legislators that touch within Clackamas County's borders, and so then they took that tool, and they took on the behemoth of ODOT and the governor. And I would, I was looking back, I always call that a win, at a local level, against tolling. And so we have other issues around SHS funding that we're really galvanized together on, and so we can do so much when, as local entities, we can find those kind of 80, 20, 70, 30 issues that really benefit in, in the issues that our community cares about. They, they're, they're hot topics, but they're also not as polarizing, as where there's a lot of common ground. And we, in the last two years, have really done a good job with that. So I'm hoping that through these different meetings, my meeting with Mayor McGriff and next week, too, and a number of, and Council President Peterson with Metro, and another, a lot of other stakeholders, and we're just trying to continue to foster those relationships moving forward. I think as we're in the legislative session, we've got to keep those relationships strong, because Clackamas County alone is only one out of 36 counties, but, you know, as a region that's well-populated, and, and with 16 different, well, 14, 16 different cities, we can, we can really be effective together. So looking forward to see how things play out in the legislature, it's still early, and I know we have a number of things we're watching, and that's my update, Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Fireside?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Chair Roberts for letting me crash the DTD meeting yesterday and talk about economic development, which I am extremely passionate about, and is near to dear, near and dear to me. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Oregon City Business Alliance, so I'm excited to just dig in and, and learn more and build those relationships. I think that's really the backbone of a thriving economy, is to making sure that the time, talent, and energy that people are spending is, is well-spent, and that our businesses are, are well-staffed, and I think that we can contribute to that conversation very much. I just want to echo something that Commissioner Schrader said, and, you know, our words when we speak and we choose to speak, they do have reverence, and they are irrevocable. And when we speak to, about, for, and with people, I think it's really important that we do so with intention and kindness and grace. And so I, I really very much appreciate that sentiment, and I hope that that continues to be the path forward, as we talk about these really tough and challenging times that all of us face. I know that I face them specifically as a mom, as with someone with an aging parent, and so I just really hope that as your representatives, that you can see that in us, and that we do carry ourselves with that reverence, and that we do understand that when we speak out, that those words are irrevocable, and they do impact. And, and we've been given this opportunity, and we should do so with great, great responsibility. So with that, I'll yield back, Chair, thank you.
Very well said. Just a couple quick things, speaking of the Oregon City Business Alliance, who attended a luncheon there Tuesday, got to get really an update from Oregon City Manager on kind of what's going on there, that was great. I do want to follow up on the paramedic suggestion that you had, I'm really excited to kind of hear, learn more about that. Also, just a quick update, that yesterday I had the opportunity to go down to Clackamas Service Center, it's just off 82nd, to really kind of see about this point-in-time count, and really how it was done. I know Commissioner Schrader went to Father's Hope, I heard comments about you going down there as well, they appreciated it. And first and foremost, I always like to brag about county staff that met some amazing county staff from Social Services, really got some insight about the program. There was, from my perspective, some real kind of misinformation that they were able to help clear up with me. I did speak with the program director of Clackamas Service Center, Solise Roman, and she did help clear up a number of issues as well, some of the staff, and the point-in-time count. And that's where I think it'd be beneficial to this board, perhaps, to have staff come and present. There's a number of variable factors, for example, when it's really cold out, people oftentimes, which they did a one-day count, which was yesterday, which was kind of chilly, that oftentimes people will go spend the day at a friend's apartment, or to get out of the weather. So it can alter it. But the other thing that was really also brought to my attention, really, is about that the county is doing throughout the year, a point-in-time, or it's not a point-in-time count, but a regular count. So I think it's important to look at both those numbers, and kind of see, are we moving the dial or not? You know, I asked staff at the point-in-time count, do they believe it's going to increase or less? And they kind of felt like we probably would see an increase, but I'm kind of waiting to see, we won't hear, hear until April. But I asked staff a number of questions, you know, what do you see as the largest population that they're serving, you know, the drug and alcohol addiction issues, and the mental health issues, as we kind of look forward to this recovery campus. What I was a little bit surprised about is how they emphasize that a large population that they see, which kind of described as, as seniors, really facing them, and the amount of services that are needed and that. And so the other thing that I kind of wanted to bring to attention, I talked to Gary about it, and perhaps there's some way through public governmental relations to kind of do an outreach for not just the Clackamas Service Center, but all of our nonprofits, to help kind of, right now, there's a need for coats, and I'm told jeans, for men in particular, and how we might be able to have citizens step up and make those donations to the individual places, in a way we could post that. So I thought that was something we as, could help as colleagues get the message out, and I know I could do my own donation to kind of make that happen as well, I know all of us probably could as well. So, and then to kind of follow up, just with Commissioner West, you know, a big issue, I wanted to let you know, which I'm sure you already are aware of, is just that, also the real need for addiction and mental health treatment was really pretty clear from staff. And so I think if Gary, in the future, we can look at perhaps having some of those staff come and just update us on the count, and give us a good idea about moving the dial. So with that, do I see Commissioner West has another comment? Go ahead.
Just, I forgot to give Gary some of my time to do this, but as the board knows, there was a pretty significant fire at the Blue Heron Paper Mill, and I was wondering if Gary could just give a public update to that, since that's in the media. Is that okay, Chair?
Yes. Thank you. Commissioner's, yes, there was a fire early this morning at the former Blue Heron Paper Mill site, now called Tamwata Village, owned by the Grand Ron, Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron. It was a three-alarm fire, Clackamas Fire District Number One was on it, and was there immediately. The fire is now out. Oregon 99E or McLaughlin Boulevard was closed, I'm not sure if it's still closed at this hour, probably. There is a former contaminated soil there from the prior paper mill site. State officials are on-site investigating to make sure there's no harm to the community, but the fire's now out. But it was serious, the cause of the fire is not known yet, but as we know more, we'll let you know, and of course, the public will be involved. But thank you to Clackamas Fire, District Number One, they took care of it right away, was on it.
All right, and thanks, Commissioner West, for bringing that up. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, and with a little bit of good news, it's informative that the action that we took to approve the value statement on the transportation issue, you know, just related to what Commissioner West was talking about, his conversation with the mayor, that, you know, as of that morning, we had six signatories on it, or re-signs, and as of this morning, everyone, that was a prior signatory, has signed again. So our coalition is alive and well, and ready, so.
Awesome. Right, well, thank you. Well, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for joining us today. If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.